You are watching the broadcast of the El Paso County Commissioners' Court Meetings. Commissioners' Court Meetings are held every Monday at 9:30 a.m. on the third floor of the El Paso County Courthouse located at 500 East San Antonio in downtown El Paso. These meetings are open to the public. The meeting will start momentarily. The county of El Paso has contracted with Next Level IT to create a technology master plan. This plan will help lay out the technology priorities over the next two to five years. A vital part of this initiative has Next Level seeking your feedback on the effectiveness of services ITD currently delivers. Your input is important, appreciated, and anonymous. We encourage you to participate in our efforts to become a better resource for you. You can access this survey by visiting the ITD Intranet homepage and clicking on the link provided. Commissioner Andrew Hagerty would like to invite you to his weekly breakfast meeting that takes place every Wednesday at 7:30 a.m. at Danny's Diner located at 4690 Trans Mountain Road. Every week he has a different speaker who will be discussing topics of interest for the community. So if you live in the northeast, west side, or anywhere else in the county, come and join us for the breakfast meeting.
Don't wait in line, pay online. Visit the Financial Recovery Division website at http://www.epcounty.com/budget/financialrecovery.htm to make your payments online or find out more about our kiosk locations. We now accept payments on misdemeanor felony and justice of the peace cases.
You can now watch Commissioners' Court Meetings on YouTube. Go to youtube.com and search for "El Paso County Commissioners" or "El Paso County, Texas." Subscribe to our channels to see our latest videos.
Did you know that you can save money on the cost of your medications? And doing so is easy. In 2015, the county of El Paso launched a prescription discount card program from coast to coast. The cards are available to all El Paso County residents free of charge and everyone qualifies. You can pick up a card at any county office location, Walgreens, Walmart, CVS, or Target pharmacies, or simply print the card at www.coast, the number two, coast, r x, dot com. Happy savings!
Did you know the county of El Paso's purchasing department is responsible for ensuring that all items and services needed by various county departments are purchased in the matter required by the state of Texas? Whether through formal sealed bids or smaller dollar quotations, the county purchasing team is dedicated to finding the best contracting return on your taxpayer dollars. Additionally, the purchasing department is responsible for the tracking of inventory within the county and properly disposing surplus to public auctions. For questions about how to become a vendor and compete for county contracts, or to learn more about public auctions, please contact us at telephone number 915-546-2048.
The 346th District Court Judge Angie Juarez Barred started the El Paso Veterans Treatment Court Program in 2012 for veterans and active service members that have been arrested and charged with a felony or misdemeanor criminal offense. To be considered for this specialty court, the statutory criteria includes be a veteran or current member of the United States Armed Forces, including a member of the Reserves, National Guard, or State Guard, and suffer from a brain injury, mental illness, or mental disorder, including PTSD, or be a victim of military sexual trauma, all occurring or resulting from military service. Call Sofia Serna, Veterans Program Director at 915-546-2119, or email her at scerna@epcounty.com for any information. Did you know that the county of El Paso's fixed asset control and inventory disposal is handled through the purchasing department? Throughout the course of each business year, the county holds live public auctions to dispose of aged equipment, vehicles, furniture, and other items that are no longer needed. To find out about upcoming auctions or to learn more about the county's inventory disposal process, contact the purchasing department at telephone number 915-546-2048. You are watching the broadcast of the El Paso County Commissioners' Court Meetings. Commissioners' Court Meetings are held every Monday at 9:30 a.m. on the third floor of the El Paso County Courthouse located at 500 East San Antonio in downtown El Paso. These meetings are open to the public. The meeting will start momentarily.
Today is Monday, April 16, 2018. Commissioners' Court is meeting in regular session at 9:31 a.m. Will you please join us in standing and saying the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
I pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. The first item is the Consent Agenda, which is composed of items 3A through 3M. Are there any items that members of the court or the audience would like to consider separately, please?
Commissioners, are there any items that you'd like to pull from the Consent Agenda? Or any member of the public? Okay, hear ye none and make a motion to approve the Consent Agenda, please.
Second.
Thank you. Commissioner Pettis? Commissioner Leon?
Aye.
Commissioner Stout?
Aye.
Commissioner Hagerty?
Aye.
Judge vote?
Aye.
Motion carries. Resolutions, item 4, 4A. Approve and adopt a resolution designating April 20, 2018, and April 21, 2018 as Global Youth Service Days in El Paso County, Texas.
Good morning, judges and commissioners. I have the honor of reading this resolution. I know we have some folks from JPD and others that are here to receive the resolution. So if y'all want to come up to the podium and as I read it, and then we'll hear from you after I'm finished. "Whereas today's youth are tomorrow's leaders and are our hope for the future, the lessons and participation they learn today will be their anchor for tomorrow's challenges. And whereas not all youth are provided with the opportunity to get involved or give their time in their community, most youth are not equipped with the knowledge or skills to learn project management. And whereas the Juvenile Justice Center, along with its community improvement program, is ready to provide an enhanced youth community service learning involvement by participating in the Global Youth Service Day, a project involving literacy and education around Ascara de Park, and the Juvenile Justice Center on Friday, April 20, 2018, and Saturday, April 21, 2018, from 9 a.m. to 12:30 p.m. And whereas youth will participate in the building of little free libraries throughout the Ascara de Park, and two for the Juvenile Justice Center, and stock each library with books for the community. And whereas these community participants are made up of youth from the Juvenile Justice Center, working hand in hand with fellow youth from the community, as well as various leaders from the community, such as judges, community leaders, and youth motivators. And whereas the Juvenile Justice Center participants, along with Youth Service America and various local community businesses, organizations, and other supporters from the community, will be honored to provide the participation and leadership in this important event, Global Youth Service Day. And now therefore be it resolved by the El Paso County Judge and the Commissioners' Court that Friday, April 20, 2018, and Saturday, April 21, 2018, be known as Global Youth Service Days. Sign this 16th day of April, 2018, the Honorable Commissioners' Court."
Second.
Thank you. Commissioner Pettis?
Aye.
Commissioner Leon?
Aye.
Commissioner Stout?
Aye.
Commissioner Hagerty?
Aye.
Judge vote?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Good morning.
Good morning. Commissioners, first off, I want to thank you guys for adopting this specific resolution. County Judge, you've been extremely helpful. Mr. Stout, you've been a tremendous asset to this organization, not just locally but nationally. I just want to remark that this specific event is a national event. We're doing this for the kids, for the youths. We realized that there's not that many sufficient outlets in El Paso for youth to be involving in community service, so we created this specific event to give them something for them to join and be involved in community. We're actually starting this event on Friday. It's something that we have internally. County Judge is going to do us the honor to be present in that specific event. So that's the kickoff. That's internal. We're doing that specific event in a JPD, and we're having our kids from Challenge be involved in different projects for them to be involved. What we're doing, we're building little libraries, which is we're promoting literacy. We're promoting literacy. We're promoting something for them to, you know, not only just be involved in community, for them to get a personal knowledge, you can say that. And we'll continue those festivities on Saturday. That's our biggest event. We're expecting around 300 people. So it's going to be a big event, you know, promoting education, literacy, and we hope to see you guys there. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any questions?
No questions, but it looks like you have a fairly large group of people here that we'd love to have themselves introduce. If you want to say something, or if you want to introduce yourselves, I'm not sure.
Hi, good morning. Elizabeth Cervantes, I work at JPD.
Good morning, Judge. Good morning, Commissioners. Israel Ten, Juvenile Probation Department.
Judge Commissioners, Iris Escalona, I'm the Tero Fouri Coordinator with the Juvenile Probation Department.
Morning. My name is Noé Núñez. I'm from Maynans, representing Maynans from JPD.
Good morning.
Good morning, Alfred González from Maynans.
Good morning, county commissioners. My name is Elizabeth Gómez. I'm the Marketing Director at United Way, and we just really appreciate your support for this event. More than 80 youth are going to be accompanying us, along with some of our young professionals from our RISE group at United Way. So it's going to be a really important day to just be able to come as a community and showcase all the contributions of our youth here in El Paso.
Good morning. My name is Lomas, and I am a cadaro in Challenge Academy.
Good morning. My name is Kade Gallegos, and I'm from Challenge Academy.
Good morning. My name is Officer Chris Farmer. I'm one of the supervisors down at the Challenge Academy.
Good morning. I'm Alexandra with County Parks, and we've been so appreciative of all the hard work that JPD and the other partners have brought together to bring this amazing project to Ascara de, that we hope to expand to the other parks as well.
Hey, Minas with Parks. I also wanted to thank you guys for passing the, for us to be able to collect extra books. That will keep the libraries maintained with all the material that we'll need to continue the program.
Judge Commissioners, Veronica Myers, Parks and Recreation Director, and I'm honored to be working with such wonderful people, and we hope to do more programs with them as far as conservation and environmental education with JPD and getting more of their kids out into the parks. Thank you.
Well, this is really exciting. I know that we've talked about the little libraries in the past, and JPD has always been such a fantastic partner, every Youth Global Services Day, but aside from that, you guys are great partners. So we're really excited about it, and thank you for your effort.
Thank you very much.
I would like to close, I would like to mention our partners that made this happen. It was United Way, El Paso County, that was one. It was also workers for El Paso. It was also, of course, El Paso County Juvenile Probation Department, Parks and Recreation Department, and UTIP, the UTIP for Civic Engagement. Those are our main partners that make this happen, this wonderful event, and once again, thank you so much for your help.
Round of applause, please.
Thank you. Item 4B. Approve and adopt a resolution designating April 3, 2018 as National Recognition Day in El Paso County, Texas.
Okay, I also have the distinct honor of reading this resolution. I know there's some folks here from La Fe, if y'all would like to come up and join us at the podium as I read this as well. "Whereas the Corporation for National and Community Service shares a priority with local elected officials nationwide to engage citizens, improve lives, and strengthen communities, and is joining with the National League of Cities, the U.S. Conference of Mayors, the National Association of Counties, and elected officials across the country to recognize the impact of service on National Recognition Day for national service on April 3, 2018. And whereas this year, the city of El Paso has been awarded more than $800,000 in program funds to support the activities of the City of El Paso Retired and Senior Volunteer Program, the City of El Paso Foster Grandparent Program, and Centro de Salud Familiar La Fe Senior Companion Program. And whereas the Retired and Senior Volunteer Program provides volunteer opportunities to more than 900 seniors who provide 45,028 volunteer service hours annually, RSVP volunteers donate their time and service at more than 42 volunteer locations. The Foster Grandparent Program provides stipend volunteer opportunities to 146 seniors who serve more than 425 children with special or exceptional needs, and the FGP volunteers provide more than 416,417 volunteer service hours annually. The La Fe Senior Companion Program provides stipend volunteer opportunities to 60 seniors who serve 63 homebound seniors. SCP volunteers provide more than 35,742 volunteer service hours annually. And whereas, the county of El Paso recognizes the importance of these valuable programs that have made tremendous contributions to El Paso community. And now therefore be it resolved by the El Paso County Judge and Commissioners' Court that April 3, 2018 shall be known as National Recognition Day. Sign this 16th day of April, 2018, the Honorable County Commissioners' Court."
That was the judge, correct?
Yes.
Thank you. Commissioner Pettis?
Aye.
Commissioner Leon?
Aye.
Commissioner Stout?
Aye.
Commissioner Hagerty?
Aye.
Judge vote?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Good morning. I've been designated as the speaker. We'd like to thank the judge and the county commissioners for recognizing the work of AMERICOR for National Recognition Day. La Fe is an important, you know, participant in that. I represent El Paso ISD. There are also other organizations, other agencies in the city that have AMERICOR volunteers working with them. Not only does it bring in a lot of resources into the community economic resources, but also it provides an opportunity for volunteering and also an opportunity for our young people to provide a year of service, not just young people, so older people, a year of service to give back to their community. So we really appreciate the recognition, and we also recognize the importance of this program for our community. So thank you very much.
Good morning, everyone. Buenos dias. You all, my name is Estela Rias-Lopez. I'm the Media and Public Information Officer for Centro de Salud Familiar La Fe. I do want to make it very clear, La Fe is accompanied up here by a wonderful multitude of incredible agencies. I'd like to give an opportunity to my colleagues here to each take a moment to introduce themselves and get some well-deserved recognition for each of their agencies. But this is about volunteerism. This is about supporting the community that we love, work in, live in, and without the energy and passion of these organizations, their administrators and their volunteers, the incredible work of all of these folks would not be made possible, and the impact on the lives of so many El Pasoans would not be made so clear as it is at this moment. So I'd like to begin with my colleague here, sister from La Fe, Jennifer Castreyon. You want to introduce yourself and everyone else?
Good morning. My name is Jennifer Castreyon. I'm the Director of the Senior Companion Program.
Thank you for being here.
Good morning. My name is Norma Corona. I'm the Director for RSVP and FGP.
Good morning, county judge, commissioners. Thank you so much for this special recognition on behalf of RSVP, Retired Senior Volunteer Program, also on behalf of almost 900 senior volunteers that give up their time to volunteer over at over 45 nonprofit organizations throughout our beautiful city. They do wonderful work, and thank you so much for the recognition.
Good morning. I'm Tensia Herrera, and Senior Companion.
I'm Rodriguez, and I have been volunteering over 16 years at the Ar County Hospital, and I've had a pleasure of meeting you all. Carlos Leon, thank you very much.
Thank you for being here. En español está bien también?
Buenos días. Mi nombre es Laura Rivera, y yo soy voluntaria. Soy abuela voluntaria del programa Grandparents en la región de 19 Enzanelisario, y es un privilegio para mí poder servir como voluntaria en la comunidad con nuestros niños. Gracias.
Good morning.
Soy voluntaria de CLIM, del Head Start, y este, mi nombre es Rosario Rodríguez. Estoy muy contenta por este programa y de servir a los niños.
Gracias por estar aquí.
Good morning, all. I'm Lori Rodríguez. I'm with the Foster Grandparent Program. And again, as well as my colleagues here, I'd like to thank you all for giving us this time this morning to recognize the volunteers who so deservingly have the right to be here today and speak to you and let you know how beautiful the impact, pardon me, the volunteer service is to them in their lives. They're touching lives for little ones in the high and, pardon me, and the Head Starts in the elementary schools. They're in social service agencies, and they're dedicating their days. They're there every day. They're very committed, and they give the children all the love and affection that they need to succeed academically and otherwise. It's a beautiful program, and I can't thank you all enough for the time and opportunity you've given us to come before you today. Thank you.
Good morning. My name is Yoli, and I work with the Retired Senior Volunteer Program and the Foster Grandparent Program as a volunteer services specialist. Thank you all for allowing us to be here this morning.
Thank you for being here.
My name is Simon Chandler. I'm with the El Paso ISD Community Schools Program.
Morning, everybody. My name is Marco López, and one of the AMERICOR vistas of the EPIS Community Schools Program.
Hi, good morning. My name is Maria Larios. I'm also an AMERICOR vista with the EPIS.
Good morning. I'm Jaclyn Longhurst, and I'm also an AMERICOR vista with EPIS. Good morning, everyone. Catherine Taylor with EPIS. I'm also an AMERICOR vista. Thank you.
Thank you. Well, thank you all so much for being here. We really appreciate you taking time out of your day to accept this resolution and allowing us to congratulate the great work that all of you are doing in various capacities. I know Commissioner Leon wanted to mention something.
Judge, Commissioners, and all of you, it gives me a tremendous amount of pride to be able to say that I know most of you, and you don't do this for attention. You don't do it for recognition. You don't do it for money. And I've got to say that anytime I visit any of the areas that you volunteer at, especially at UMC, I know IRMA is there. It makes me feel so much at home, like, hey, I know somebody here. I belong here. And you affect more people than you might even imagine, that they won't tell you. Thank you. But on behalf of Commissioners' Court, thank you very much for the service that you give our community. Thank you all very much.
And just on behalf of, you know, all of our organizations, definitely want to thank Commissioner Stout and his staff for helping us to process this resolution. Thank you.
Pleasure. Thank you.
Round of applause, please.
Round of applause, please.
Item 4C, approve and adopt a resolution supporting the 5th Annual Veterans Food Drive in the County of El Paso.
Yes, I have the honor of reading this resolution today. Whereas our veterans have fought in many great world conflicts to keep America and its citizens safe and free from the tyranny of the outside world, while also performing in many humanitarian roles like building hospitals, schools, and necessities of life like access to running water and food. And whereas the El Paso Veterans and Riders Association are dedicated to the refinement and improvement of veteran opportunities, access to care and quality of life, and is heavily involved in creating new programs for the El Paso community to ensure that the problems affecting our veterans are put in the past. Whereas the El Paso Veterans and Riders Association, for the 5th year, seeking the support of the City and County of El Paso to continue its mission to support and care for homeless and hungry veterans in our community. And whereas the 5th Annual Veterans Food Drive will start on April 15 and run through June 15, with collections being placed throughout the city and county of El Paso. Whereas the previous food drives have so far collected over 250,000 pounds of food, blankets and furniture, and with other items to be redistributed to the veterans and their families throughout the county of El Paso. But nothing goes to waste if items are not usable here, the items are taken over to Juarez or distribution there. Whereas to make this food drive the best yet, the El Paso Veterans and Riders Association have now partnered with the El Paso Coalition for the Homeless to reach more veterans that are in need throughout our community. Now therefore be it recognized by the El Paso County Judge and Commissioners Court to support the 5th Annual Veterans Food Drive throughout the county of El Paso. Sign the 16th day of April, 2018, by this Honorable Commissioners Court.
Thank you. Commissioner Pettis?
Aye.
Commissioner Leon?
Aye.
Commissioner Stout?
Aye.
Commissioner Hagerty?
Aye.
Judge vote.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Morning.
Morning. Well, five years we've all been together on this. It would not have been as successful without y'all's help. I'll be honest, the Commissioners Court has been an outstanding supporter of our veterans, not just the present ones, but our future veterans. And we are very, very grateful for everything you've done for us. We normally do this in November. We're moving it up now to get everything in place. We'll sue to our blanket drives and Commissioner Leon, with you again, in the November timeframe and try to organize the distribution. Today, I'm joined with Ms. Carol Bowley from the Coalition for, from the El Paso Coalition for the Homeless and Mr. Dwayne Williams from the El Paso City Military Affairs and ex-official for the County Veterans Board. Representative Rivera was going to join us today, but he had to attend training, so he's out of town. Delly Brunus is going to join us too. We are expanding. Now the city's coming on board, everybody's coming on board. Delly Brunus, who has been, who was, came up with this idea of how, and everything, is not here today, but we're going to do, in the military, we call it a change of command or a change of responsibility. And we've asked, and he's very happily agreed to, Commissioner Hagerty, to now assume the responsibilities of lead for the county. Would you join me, please, Commissioner? Y'all get the standard, but since he's the new guy, he gets the, nothing discriminatory, just, he'll be proud of this. The El Paso Veterans and Riders Association, EPVRA, in conjunction with Commissioner Andrew Hagerty and Representative Henry Vera are working together for the 5th Annual Veterans Food Drive, April 15 to June 15, 2018. This is in support for El Paso's wounded warriors, veterans, and their families. Welcome aboard, Commissioner. Would you like to say something?
It's weird it's off over here. I have my own mic up there.
You can raise the podium if you need to.
No, just exciting to be able to help any way we can, whether standing up there, standing over here, and being able to join forces with the county, the city, as well as the Veterans Riders, to be able to help as many people as possible. So it's exciting to be able to help. Thank you. Thank you.
It's always been a tradition that we take pictures with y'all coming, visiting with us. So would you mind joining us and Commissioner Hagerty in taking the official county VRA photo for the event? Carol Bowley from the El Paso Coalition for the Homeless would like to say something.
Good morning. Good morning. I'm Carol Bowley. I'm the Executive Director of the El Paso Coalition for the Homeless. And as you know, we are engaged in many activities that support our homeless and at-risk veterans. So we are excited to partner with the EPVRA, Darrell Mon, on this community-wide collaboration. And I do want to thank you all very much for supporting this event.
Sure?
Man of words.
Okay. We deeply thank you all. And we know without your support, it would not have been as successful as it has been. And we are now approaching the 300,000 pounds limit, our goal of five years. So we deeply thank you all and I'm touched. Y'all proved, or y'all stand by your word that you do support and appreciate the veterans and that means very, very much to us. We are, we do know that. And the veterans do appreciate this. Thank you.
Round of applause, please.
I'll let y'all get back to work.
Thank you. Item 5, public comment.
We have one member of the public signed up to speak, Mr. Pierre Andre Yuzadaga. Good morning, Mr. Yuzadaga.
Good morning, County Judge, and my fellow county commissioners. It's good to see everyone again. In continuing my talk or speech from last week, there's a lot of news and so I'm trying to give my talk based around that. And I wasn't really sure how to start it off, but I'm going to say this. On the way here, I took the border highway, ladies and gentlemen. And I realized that Mexico is ghetto. There's a lot of ghettos and Juarez is built around the international bridges. We know that, all the ladies and gentlemen along the border know that. But it's important because, I'm saying this because there's a lot of children. I showed a newspaper clipping of a kid trying to jump the wall. And I'm thinking, as I'm driving over here, I'm looking at all the Border Patrol agents located along the border and the wall. There was a case that I remembered where a Border Patrol agent shot a kid. He was 15, 14, 15, 16-year-old. A lot of kids play in the streets. I don't care if you're an American kid or a Mexican kid, you're playing out in the streets. That's what kids do. We have our bikes, we go outside and we play with our friends, we go skateboarding, or we go to the local park, or we go to a friend's house. But we're playing out in the streets. And that's where our kids are at. The policies that we have in place today expose our children to danger. The laws that we need to focus on are cannabis. Cannabis legislation addresses border security. It addresses neighborhood issues. It addresses immigration issues. The reason why the state is so hesitant moving forward is because Governor Abbott lives so far away from the border. And he doesn't know how to, how to kind of, you know, get in here. He doesn't know where to get in. There's a saying, get in where you fit in. The man does not fit in because, quite honestly, geographically, he's so far away from the border. So his kids are brought up different. He doesn't understand what's going on in the family courts when it comes to drugs. I'm telling you, drugs are out in the streets. Generating revenue is important. Why is it that in Washington, DC, they have a legalized market for cannabis, their kids are exposed to safety measures down here along the border? We're not. We're not. I'm telling you, as an ex-marijuana dealer turned Texas marijuana felon, and now a founder, president, and CEO of Emerald Star Global Industries, the world's number one cannabis company, that's my dream, that's my focus, that's the direction I'm headed. Emerald Star Global Industries, my mission, the way I operate right now is to help legislators pass intelligent measures that keeps our children's safety in mind, that keeps their best interests in mind because the laws are in place. Judges are overwhelmed with, with, with all sorts of cases. And we fight them and use them all sorts of ways in the courts. I still spend a lot of time in the courts because I've experienced a lot of things out in the streets, along with my daughter, along with some of your relatives. El Paso is such a big, yet small, community. We all know one another. And, and yet, America is the same way. Texas is so large, we occupy such a large territory here in the States. But yet, Texas is somewhat misunderstood because we've had all sorts of history. We've had all sorts of fighting, which we still see today. We've had all sorts of peace, going back to fighting and peace. How do you, how do you address a US-Mexico relationship? You knock on Mexico's door and you say, hey, look, we need to sit down. I realize that we're a powerhouse, United States of America is a powerhouse, and Mexico is a third-world country. I mean, how do we expect President Nieto to lead a country that's so diverse? You have ghettos. I mean, literally, drive across border, border highway. You're going to see from paisano ghetto houses, there's no asphalt on those streets. Kids are playing out in the dirt. Right across the border, our streets are asphalted. And then as you get closer to the bridges, you start getting asphalted streets, you start getting development. They might be outdated and 100-year-old development, but you still have buildings. But you're beginning to notice that. That's why there's so much battling and contradicting and fighting between presidents, governors. I want to mention this to the governors before I go. In closing, governors, Governor Abbott, the governors of America, remember Governor Schaefer and the commission he led when he was asked by a presidential administration to look at cannabis and how cannabis affects judges, county commissioners, members of the public, children, seniors, and what have you, health industry. And remember what he said, he had nothing negative to say about cannabis. He endorsed it, yet we ignored his time, his intellect, the resources that we as a government provided him with to execute these surveys. We need to go back and look at Governor Schaefer's report. In closing, Judge, thank you for your 10 of years. Commissioners, thank you for allowing me this podium to address state and federal issues as well as international. I'll see you all in a week. God bless us all. God bless our children. Thank you again.
Have a good afternoon, Mr. Yuzadaga. Thank you.
Yes, sir. Thank you again.
I believe that is the only member of the public signed up to speak, Ms. Pitzak.
Thank you, Judge. So moving on to the regular agenda, it's been requested that item 13 be taken next. Item 13, to approve and authorize the El Paso County Emergency Services District Number One to apply for a $3 million loan to construct Station Number Two in the district.
Good morning, County Judge and Commissioners. Gabby Federal from the Budget and Fiscal Policy Department. Thank you so much for moving this item up. This morning, we do have staff from our ESD One District. This item is requesting your approval to go out for a $3 million bond. It would be a 19-year term at a fixed interest rate of 3.85%. We do have the staff here if you all have any questions.
Commissioners, I know that members from ESD Number One have met with everyone individually, I believe, and received a presentation. I'm not sure if there are any questions that you may have at this time. Okay. I have no questions either. Would you like to comment on maybe the project and the need in the community for building the second station?
Sure. So as we had spoke with you all, the need is, is because of the rapid growth in our area. And where our goal is with the second station is, one, to reduce our ISO rating in those areas, saving the homeowners in that area a significant amount on their fire insurance, going from a nine to a two on their ISO rating. Also, to help reduce our response time to those, to the families in that area. And also just to get ahead of the growth curve that's in that area. Again, we're looking for a $3 million loan that will be taken out over 19 years.
And for the members of the public court listening, what is ISO? And why is that important to them?
So ISO is an insurance rating. And what that determines is how much you pay for your homeowner's insurance, for the fire portion. So for example, we've already reduced our rating to a two for all of the areas that are within a five-mile radius from our current fire station. So for example, we live five miles from that station. So our rating went from a five to a two in that, in that area. And so we, for the nine to the two, they're looking at about a 30 to 35% rating, which a lot of those, those homes in those areas are taking quite a hit on their homeowner's insurance. So that's a significant cost savings to them.
Now that'll be a 30 to 35% on the fire portion of the homeowner's insurance.
Yes, Commissioner Leon?
Can you explain to the public also, I saw some graphics on the news this morning, last night, where your new station is planned and what type of coverage you're going to have from there?
So what, if you'll, in the packet that we submitted, there's a map that has circles on it. I don't know if that's something that can be pulled up or viewed on the, but anyhow, it's on the corner of Mission Ridge and Pasail de Leste. And so it's, it's about 4.5 miles from our current station, giving us an overlapping radius of about 1.57 miles between our current station and that station. But it'll, it'll go all the way out to Loop 375, all the way out to Job Road, all the way covering the areas of Pelacano.
Thank you.
I just wanted to make a comment. You know, obviously, this is something that, that's probably needed because we need to make sure that folks in that, out in that area are covered by, you know, fire service and ambulance service. But I just think we really need to, this is, this is kind of reactionary to the growth and this is, I think, a result of the continued urbanization of the unincorporated area of the county and which, which is, which becomes more and more expensive, which becomes more and more of a burden for taxpayers. And I think this is kind of counterproductive to what I think we should be doing when it comes to incentivizing, or disincentivizing, if you want to say, further sprawl and further growth in the unincorporated areas. And I think that we really need to, as a county, work, work much harder to come up with policies that disincentivize sprawl and disincentivize the further urbanization of the county because it's becoming more and more expensive. And by providing And by providing more and better access to this service, in my opinion, is, is, is kind of working against that. Against that, exactly that. So, you know, I, I understand that, that, that this is something, this is something that's needed. But I think that we need to have more deep conversations and larger, better, looking, looking more closely at, you know, how we can, how we can incentivize more growth within the city where there's infrastructure, where there's already this type of services provided without having to tax the, the residents and the taxpayers or create a higher burden for them. So that's just my, you know, my, my thought about this. I'm, I'm gonna vote in favor because I think it's needed. But I think that, that said, we need to, we need to work, work more towards, towards incentivizing people moving back into the core and disincentivizing this type of growth in, in the, in the unincorporated areas.
And, and there has been a more larger conversation, I think, that probably needs to be had on infill development. But in the meantime, as we continue to see growth in the unincorporated and incorporated areas of the county, there's obviously a need for, for conversations like this to take place. And the county has heavily invested in transportation projects out in that area. In fact, Commissioner Pettis and I were at a opening for Eastlake Phase Two last week. And so it's really great to see all that is occurring in Horizon and around Horizon. It is rapidly growing. Commissioners, any other comments?
We've got to be careful and remember for the next couple of years, I know budget-wise, this is gonna be a very expensive cost. And we're pretty close to the top line anyway. So we've got to be very careful budget-wise to make sure we're being as diligent as possible. I, I agree. I think the need is there. I think the, the residents deserve the, the insurance rate discounts. But we've got to remember that over the next couple of years while we're, while we're, the ESD is doing their budget, that this means that they're not gonna be able to get stuff that they've been able to get in the past. And we've got to be able to watch that and, and make sure of that. But I agree with, with the need.
And I believe in the presentations, you touched on what you would be doing in the next couple of years to ensure that you are meeting your obligation and not overextending yourselves. Do you want to touch base on that maybe?
So one of the few, the things that we're discussing, as Commissioner Hagerty touched on, is the next few years, because of our debt service, we know will be kind of the tightest years financially. So some of the things that we're planning on doing, because we're already pre-planning. So in this year's fiscal year budget, we're already planning on making some cost cuttings, both to capital improvements that we already have budgeted, and also to perhaps some of the operating costs so that we can roll that money forward to the next year. It actually rolls into our reserve, but then again, comes back into the operating budget. And then also, we'll be using some of our reserve balance. I know Commissioner Hagerty had a lot of those questions when we met with him individually. And I know our reserve balance and the percentage of reserve has come a discussion in previous budget meetings. But we have, we have always had that reserve, one, for catastrophic events, two, for any type of tax deficiency, property tax deficiencies. Because as you all know, tax, property tax is our only source of revenue. So we're using our reserve balance as a way to fund that quick growth before the tax money comes. So that's something that we'll be utilizing to, to help in the next few years.
Commissioners, any other questions?
Make a motion to approve. Second?
Thank you. Commissioner Pettis?
Aye.
Commissioner Leon?
Aye.
Commissioner Stout?
Aye.
Commissioner Hagerty?
Aye.
Judge vote?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you all very much. We appreciate your time and your support. Thank you.
Thank you. It's been requested that item seven be taken next. Item seven, auditor. Presentation and discussion of market conditions from financial advisor and quarterly update regarding long-term debt portfolio. Discuss and provide direction on possible financing considerations.
Good morning.
Morning, Judge. Commissioners, good to be back in El Paso County. We have a presentation for you today to discuss with you market conditions, your debt portfolio, any financing opportunities that you may have. We present this, as I said, on a quarterly basis. Have some results here. Today, I'm joined by my colleagues Rahil Hirji and Dan Mahoney, with George K. Baum as well. For the record, Brad Engst, Vice President with George K. Baum and Company. Let's see, start with a look at your current debt portfolio, something that you've seen. And we've shown you a few times here recently. If you look down the list, we've got a mix of certificates of obligations and general obligation bonds. The county does not have any revenue bonds at this time. Over in the right-hand column is the call dates that we have shown you a few times over the years. The call date is your prepayment date, when you have the opportunity to refinance bonds and obtain interest rate savings. That's what we did with you in December, delivering approximately $5 million in savings. But you'll see that those dates are all starting to be pushed out quite a bit. We've, we've used the low-interest rate environment over the last several years to accomplish savings through most of your debt portfolio. As of now, your next callable bond is gonna be in 2019. You know, something that's changed within the federal rules with the IRS was, came about just this past year with the tax reform and legislation. They took away what's called an advanced refunding. That was the option where you could, one time during the life of a bond, refinance the bond before you got to that call date in order to take advantage of, of low interest rates that provide enough savings, not only to, to take you into the future, but to get you to that prepayment date through an escrow period. That no longer is a tool that we have available to us in the courts and, and El Paso County as a whole. But as I stated, we did do a good job here over the last few years, taking advantage of those and really setting up your debt portfolio here for the future. In the bottom right-hand corner, you have the principal payoff. We are paying it off approximately $12 to $13 million a year. The ratings agencies like to see that at least half of your total principal is being amortized within a ten-year period. We are accomplishing that through your current portfolio. Here's a look at the graphical or the bar chart version of your, of your debt service payments coming up over the next fifteen years or so. You'll see that it's fairly level at the beginning, dropping off in year 2023. This sets you up so that you have future capacity. We know El Paso County continues to grow. You need these options and availabilities in order to take care of some new projects. So while we are flat here currently over the next five years, if you continue to have your tax-based growth, which is averaged about 2% a year, it does continue to build on some capacity here in the short term without having to increase your tax rate, helping out your citizens and knowing what that tax bill will come, be, be due coming in the near future. You have some capabilities into the year 23 to take on some larger projects. Another look at your historical assessed valuation or your tax base. In the top left-hand column, you have your AV showing strong, steady growth here over the last fifteen years. Back in the early 2000s, we saw some quicker appreciation and growth. Here over the last seven, eight years, we've averaged approximately 2% to 3%. Over the, in the second to right-hand column, we have your total tax rate. You'll see the last four years have been very steady at the 45 cents per hundred dollars of value to your residents with a declining percentage of your total tax rate. So we have your debt service as a percentage of that whole total tax rate has been reduced steadily here over the last five years as well, from 12.6 back in 2012 to current level of 10.6. Okay, let's get into some current market information. Generally speaking, the, the bond rates, interest rates that are available to you, to many municipal issuers throughout the country and in Texas, continue to be below historical levels. The twenty-year averages are still above where we are today, which is a good sign if you do have needs. If you have a high credit rating, as the county does with the double A ratings, it presents some opportunities for you. Not only to take care of some of your infrastructure needs, but to do it, to do it at a reduced cost compared to some of these historic levels. Talk to you a little bit about the flattening of the yield curve. You may have heard this out in the, in the economic news here recently. On your left is the current yield curves that are, which is the interest rates available to you over a certain period of time. We've shown one to thirty years here. The pink line there with the box icon represents the double A credit. And you'll see it starts at about a 160 in one year, moves to slightly above a 3% if you're to issue thirty-year bonds. But really, what I want to show you is the difference between that year one and year thirty has really shrunk quite a bit. Typically, we see a steeper curve to where it's, it costs you much more on the long end, meaning the 20, 30-year range than it does on the front end. So looking at the chart on the, on the right, you look at the blue line, the solid line. It represents one year ago today. You'll see that the short-term rate, the one, one-year rate was about a 0.9. And it finished up at 30 years about, right just below 3%. Today, represented by that yellow line, you'll see that it's come up on the short end quite a bit at about that 160. But it's, it's stayed about the same on the long end. So again, there's some opportunities here for the court should they choose to move forward with some capital improvement projects to attack some of the capital plan and infrastructure needs. Really, it's not costing you anymore to go out and take on some of these long-term projects than it would to take on a shorter-term project in the ten-year range. I talked to you about some of those historical averages. So this pink line here and the gray dotted line below it represent twenty-year historical averages for the benchmark credit rates. So these are, benchmark is a triple A-type entity. The state of Texas maintains that. A few other issuers around the state and country have that. But that, that thirty, or that twenty-year average has been about 3.25%. If you look to the bottom right of your chart, that blue line and the green dotted line below it represent where current rates are today versus that twenty-year average. So we are still well below these historical averages, even though we've come up from a couple of years ago from which were 40, 50-year lows. We're still in a good environment for you to take care of some of your long-term projects. This chart here represents the flow of dollars into and out of municipal bond funds. This shows us the demand for city and county debt across the country. You'll see the green lines represent inflows into bond funds, where the red or orange line represents outflows. Over the past year, we've seen pretty steady inflows into bond funds. Again, that's representing that demand, which means it's gonna continue to hold your, your interest rates steady for the time being. This graph is showing you the credit spreads. We've seen those continue to tighten with the triple A MMD average in the yellow line. And then let's jump into some of the economic headlines that we've been following here in the last quarter for you. Starting with the equity market, we have in that top right-hand corner, the chart that shows performance here from the last quarter for the US stock market, international developed stocks. Emerging markets is one of the few sectors that we've seen increase slightly. But global real estate, the bond market also with declines. And then we see the global bond market versus the US with slight increases. Coming off the general election in November and fourth quarter of 2017, we saw drastic increases. Here this past quarter, we've seen some corrections, a little bit more settling of some of the drastic increases in the market. There continues to be some volatility. But that volatility sees us going up one day, maybe down the next day. Netting out is these percentages that you see. It's been a little different this past quarter with some of the trade talk that's been in the press from Trump administration with some of the, you know, with China, including NAFTA, which we'll jump into here in a few minutes. But we see that driving quite a bit of the results in the equity market. There on the top left is another chart showing the volatility. We have the dotted line representing a spot where we saw the volatility on the, which is represented by that bottom line in the chart, spiked quite dramatically. At the same time, you see the S&amp;P Composite Index on that top line took a, took a dip, which is when we saw some of the correction that occurred, starting in late January and early February. So correlation between those two. We also keep an eye on some other leading indicators in the economic index, whether it be jobs reports, manufacturing reports. And that's what we see in the top right-hand corner. A lot of times when we see these leading indicators start to show as negative signs, it corresponds to a drop in the stock market or in equities. And of course, when we see that happen, we see a rush to fixed income or a flight to safety, which affects your borrowing rates. This is going back to 1960. The blue line representing the index for these economic indicators with the shaded bars showing when the economic news came out, that was not favorable. You can see that it corresponds to some of these drops in the market over the time, over time. There were some of the announcements about steel and aluminum tariffs and, and also the Chinese import tariffs. We've been seeing the volatility. We haven't, we've seen it affect the equity markets, but we haven't seen it affect the bond markets quite as much. Of course, we continue to keep an eye on NAFTA, very important to this part of the state, to this part of the country. The verdict is still out on where we're gonna end up. We have been getting news lately that the Trump administration is starting to soften their stance on some of the trade imports and requirements with Mexico and Canada when it comes to automobiles. So we're, we're hopeful, encouraged that they can come to a good solution and not be quite stiff with that, with those demands. And I think there, Congress is continuing to be in those negotiations. I think we'll see something in the coming months on that. And we'll be able to break that down for you once, once we get the final word on that. Around the state, we've seen several other counties here issuing over the past quarter. Some of the larger ones, Harris County in the Houston area, went out with a large toll road bond, 560 million. Fort Bend County went out with about 58 million. Again, that's a road bond. Transportation continues to be a hot-button topic around the counties in Texas. That's one of the main priorities. We're seeing need results. We're working with Reeves County. They need some transportation needs as well. But there's a report for you on what some of your peers are doing around the state. I talked about the flattening of the yield curve. Here's another look at what it was about a year ago versus today. Again, the quick and short takeaway from this is that it doesn't cost you anymore to borrow for 20 or 30 years compared to that 15- to borrow for 20 or 30 years compared to that 15-year mark or 10-year mark. When it, when we talk about interest rate, of course, the longer you push that off, you do have to pay interest on it, but you don't have an increased rate in order to go out for these long-term projects. That takes us into some of your specific financing considerations and opportunities that you may have right now. As I spoke about in my opening, we worked with the county to get a refinancing this past December. We were back here in January to talk about the results. That was 5.6 million of net present value savings, which represented about 10% of the refunded bonds. We have structured, been working with staff to look at what a CO issuance would, how much you could get currently utilizing those savings in order to put that back into some of your current infrastructure needs. Timing is such that we'd like to go out this spring and get it in place before your INS or your tax rate is set this summer. So we're working on that schedule, and perhaps we'll be back in front of the court with an option for you coming up soon. Currently, based on only using those savings, so this is no increased debt burden compared to what you were this past year, no increased INS tax rate, meaning your debt service levy or tax rate, we can produce approximately $5 million towards a new project. This is another look at that same structure, looking at the year-by-year payments, some of the interest rates, about a 3.3% currently that we're looking at for approximately 13 to 14-year type obligation. And that 13, 14 years is structured that way so that it matched that old debt that we refinanced for you. We didn't want to necessarily extend it. I've talked to you about there's those opportunities about going out further, and we're certainly working with staff further on those options. The schedule, what you, it may look like should the court and staff decide to move forward, kick things off in early May, and look to a closing in July before that tax rate is set. We've been working on some opportunities. I know the Commissioner's Court has developed some policies and has been looking for some strategies to move forward to attack some of the stormwater needs. You've set aside a penny of your minimum tax rate that can be used towards some of these needs countywide. We understand there to be very large needs, so we've looked at what would that penny produce if we were to go out and do a large bond issuance for you all at once? And then we've also looked at how can we structure this to have availability for funding on a annual or biannual basis so that you can do projects every couple of years or every year? There's some certain parameters that are required when you go out to these type of bonds. It's a little bit different than your general obligation or certificate of obligation-type credit. It does require some debt service coverages and sometimes some debt service reserve funds. And then similarly, we've looked at how you could utilize this type of funding for transportation bonds as well. And so again, the transportation is also a penny. So this is looking at what would one penny of revenue, based on your current assessed valuation, growing at a 2% rate over the next 25 years look like? Based on this structure, you could produce approximately $80 million towards a project utilizing that amount. If we look at it on a biannual basis, you get a little bit, you get less money upfront, but this is more of a perpetual-type system and tools that the county could use to continuously take care of new projects over the years. We structured this one based on 12.5 million dollars every two years. Again, you could do this every year. You could do larger, you could do smaller amounts, but this amount, we believe, is a, an amount that you could continue to do over the years. And let's look at it graphically. So utilizing 20 to 25-year bonds, you go out and using that penny of revenue, issue bonds in year one, which is represented by the dark blue line. You make your payments, larger payments upfront to capture that full amount. By doing that, you're going to lower your interest cost instead of issuing level debt service from the beginning. It also enables you to put in place this program. Every other year, you can go out and do the same issuance and bring in the same amount of money without increasing that tax rate that we talked about. We've shown you four years, or this actually represents eight years, but four different issuances of this type of bond. As you continue to have your AV growth, it allows you to layer it on, and then eventually you get out to the tail end where each bond issue is starting to mature and be paid off, which again allows you for that additional issuance and take care of some of these projects. So working with staff and with the Commissioner's Court, we're happy to further develop this, but wanted you to be aware of these opportunities to take care of some of the stormwater and transportation needs. Thank you for your time, and I'd like to stand for any questions that you may have
We have many needs, stormwater and transportation being just two of them. And so I know that staff is looking at what our options are and what that money could be used for, and heading into that May meeting, I think we'll have a better idea what we can do with that.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, appreciate it. Good afternoon, thank you for being here.
Board appointments, item six. Approve the reappointment of Commissioner Vincent Perez's appointee Miguel Fernandez to the El Paso County Hospital District Board for a second and final three-year term beginning April 1st, 2018 through March 31st, 2021.
Thank you, Judge and Commissioners. I'm very pleased to reappoint Mr. Miguel Fernandez to the El Paso County Hospital District. As you know, this is perhaps the most important appointment that we make. The hospital district is responsible for a very large budget, approximately 700 million for the hospital district. Mr. Miguel Fernandez has been a very strong advocate for the hospital district. He's been a very effective board member, and I'm pleased he's agreed to serve for an additional three years. With that, move to approve.
Thank you. And was that Commissioner Leon second?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
I will say in the time that we've had joint meetings, he's been extremely knowledgeable, extremely engaged, and I'm excited to hear he wants to run again. It's fantastic.
Thank you. Commissioner Perez?
Aye.
Commissioner Leon?
Aye.
Commissioner Stout?
Aye.
Commissioner Hagerty?
Aye.
Judge vote?
Aye.
Motion carries. Public Works, item eight. Approve and authorize the allocation of 95 square feet of office space located in the community center at the northwest annex, Binton, for a new Public Works onsite environmental satellite office to provide services to Westside area residents.
I've been finding this for a long time.
Good morning, Judge Commissioners, Norma Palacios, Public Works Department. We are requesting the allocation of this space to better serve the community and the residents of the unincorporated area on the west side of town. We currently have an office located in far east Montana, and while we offer the services, it's hard for us to meet with the constituents since we don't have allocated space on the west side. So we're requesting your approval for the allocation of the space.
I've been pushing for this for about two years, so I moved to approve. I'm very excited this is finally happening.
Second.
That was Commissioner Perez?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Perez?
Aye.
Commissioner Leon?
Aye.
Commissioner Stout?
Aye.
Commissioner Hagerty?
Aye.
Judge vote?
Aye.
Motion carries.
And Ms. Palacios, before you leave, so this is also, it ties into the county's effort to be doing more in the communities when it comes to all the onsite work that we're requesting and some of the changes that we recently made to the fees. And so it just creates better access to the community in far west El Paso County, especially now given that we have great representation on the east side, it seems like, so extending services.
Now we'll have the same type of services on the west side.
Perfect.
Yes. Yeah, we're suboperation. We're actually planning and starting three days a week. Monday, Wednesday, and Friday at the west side location, and then see what the needs are. And if needed, need be, then we will adjust those hours to better, to better serve the community, whatever works for the community.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item nine. Discuss and take appropriate action for a variance request from the County of El Paso subdivision regulations for Bancho de la Palma subdivision.
Commissioners, for this item, I believe we have to hold a public hearing to take any comment from the community. And so at this time, I'd make a motion to open up, to have a public hearing.
Second.
Thank you. Commissioner Perez?
Aye.
Commissioner Leon?
Aye.
Commissioner Stout?
Commissioner Hagerty?
Aye.
Judge vote?
Aye.
Motion carries.
At this time, do we have any members of the public who'd like to address the Commissioner's Court on item number nine? Saying none, I'd make a motion to close the public hearing? Or do we take the comment during public hearing and then close it on, close it up then?
You can go ahead and read the agenda item in, Ms. Pitzik, and then go ahead and comment on it.
We really got to start doing resolutions at the end.
Item nine. Discuss and take appropriate action for a variance request from the County of El Paso subdivision regulations for Bancho de la Palma subdivision.
Do we have any members of the public here to speak? Mr. Alonso, are you sure you don't want to say anything on this? Okay. Okay. There are no members here to speak on this item, so I'd make a motion to go ahead and close the public hearing.
Second.
Thank you. Commissioner Perez?
Aye.
Commissioner Leon?
Aye.
Commissioner Stout?
Aye.
Commissioner Hagerty?
Aye.
Judge vote?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Good morning.
Good morning, Judge Commissioners, Gilbert Saldana with Public Works Department. This variance request is for a 15-acre property at Bunting Wingo Reserve Road in Precinct Number Three. The property is planned to be subdivided into three lots, as shown on an exhibit. One of the lots that will have right-of-way frontage of approximately 207 feet and a length of approximately 868 feet, which does not conform with the three-to-one ratio as per the section 2.8 R of the subdivision regulations. Therefore, the property owner is requesting a variance from the subdivision regulations. Our department has reviewed this thoroughly and does not foresee any issues with the request and is therefore recommending approval.
Move to approve.
Commissioner Perez?
Aye.
Commissioner Leon?
Aye.
Commissioner Stout?
Commissioner Hagerty?
Aye.
Judge vote?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Thank you.
Item 10. Approve and authorize the county judge to approve the promotional fair of ozone action days for the El Paso County Transit.
Morning.
Good morning, Judge Commissioners, Sal Alonso of Public Works Department. This item before you is a promotional fair for the routes 10 through 50, and this would allow residents to ride the service on the days selected by the Texas Commission Environmental TCQ on ozone days. And this is declared by them 24 hours before the ozone day, so they'll notify us and then we'll relay that over to our vendor. And then on those selected days by TCQ, we'll provide free service to all residents, passengers using our transit system. This was, this is our second year doing it. We did do it last year back in June 26, 26, 2018, where we were two months into the actual ozone period from May 1st to October 31st. So this is why this item is before you now, that way we could capture the complete timeline on the ozone day. With your approval, we recommend approval.
And I believe last year, there was only one day?
Yes, yes. There was a couple of them early in May, but since we hadn't brought an item before you, we didn't count those. But from the time from July through the October 31st, there was one ozone day that was...
Sal, do you by chance have the ridership that we had last year at Bunting?
Roughly in between July through August, we were looking at a total ridership about, an average, about 6,000 riders.
6,000 for the entire period?
Yes, sir.
Oh, that's pretty good.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, thank you.
And so we, I assume that we absorb the cost then for those ozone days, or how does that?
Yes, on those days, we don't collect fares, so we don't collect fares on that. Formula-wise, on how we receive funds for this transit is based on ridership. So we still have that counting towards the goal on when FTA and Texas distributes the funds. One of the key items that they look for is ridership. So of course, we encourage everybody to use transit on a daily basis, but this kind of gives back to the community a little something on those certain days that were selected.
Motion to approve?
Second.
And that was the Judge and Commissioner Leon? Thank you. Commissioner Perez?
Aye.
Commissioner Leon?
One more question, Sal.
Yes, sir.
Is this in conjunction, does the city also do this on the same days?
No, I think the city does something differently. I think what the city does is, they call it dump the pump or something like that. It's a similar promotion, but they select certain days to do this promotion.
But they're not...
No, they used to do it a few years ago, but they stopped doing it.
I see, okay.
Aye.
Thank you. Commissioner Stout?
Aye.
Commissioner Hagerty?
Aye.
Judge vote?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Alonso.
Purchasing, item 11. Approve and authorize the inter-agency transfer of six surplus county vehicles to the Anthony, Texas Police Department in the amount of $10 per vehicle for a total amount of $60 to be remitted to the County of El Paso. Funds to be deposited into account, GF purchasing unclassified rev.
Good morning.
Good morning, Deborah Crejo County Purchasing Agent. With your permission, I'd like to also have item 12 read in. These are similar, and I'd like to discuss them in total.
Certainly. Item 12. Approve and authorize the inter-agency transfer of three surplus county vehicles to the Canuteo Independent School District Police Department in the amount of $50 per vehicle for a total amount of $150 to be remitted to the County of El Paso. Funds to be deposited into account, GF purchasing unclassified rev.
Deborah Crejo County Purchasing Agent, per the policy enacted in June of 2017, we now get requests from smaller agencies within the county limits for some of our surplus items. Of course, if we are not getting rid of it, we're not giving it to them. But once you have approved it to be transferred for disposition, our fleet director works with each agency, and they look at what might need to be done to that to get it back into usable working order. And then each agency presents what they think they can sustain with their budget. The reason these two agencies are offering different amounts is because they have varying budgets. And the attached letters that go with these, we actually ask them to list what they think is going to need to be done to each vehicle. They may have larger budgets, but once all the repairs are accounted for, we let them offer for your approval what they think they can sustain. And so in both of these cases, each of them have presented within the policy exactly what we need in order for you to make that decision.
And correct me if I'm wrong, I believe that it, one of the questions that was raised was why don't we put these out to auction? Would we make more money? And I believe it's probably more costly to do that for some of these, or...
Well, I would like to state from a purchasing perspective, we have the choice to do either. There's, of course, the idea that we could make more money, but it's not a substantial amount of money. And sometimes that is weighed against the helpfulness to the smaller agency. And so I'll let Hope then speak to that.
Good morning, Judge Commissioners, Hope in State with Fleet Operations Director. So when we have our auctions, the average vehicle we usually sell for about $600. On the police cars, it's probably about half that because we have to pull the bumpers off. There's no backseat. We pull all the cages out, the emergency lights, and a lot of these vehicles are not running. So on the police vehicles, we tend to get probably about $300. So to answer your question, we could get a little bit more, but not, you know, not a whole lot more.
And I don't want to stifle any inter-agency collaboration. I think it's clearly great, and when we have these municipalities that don't have the capacity that we do, that it's great that we're sharing resources this way. So I was... So I wasn't in any way trying to minimize us doing this.
I agree. Similar to the Parks Department when we did last week, I think these are county resource dollars that purchase the vehicles. It's going to assist the residents who live in the county still. If we, if we can save tax dollars for them as well as not really hurt us one way or the other, I think it's a no-brainer to do this, honestly. So I move to approve both items. And also, just to add to what Mr., what Hopden just said a while ago, it also, by removing that equipment, it also costs us more money. So in the long run, it's probably a wash because of the cost. It takes a lot of time to remove the bumpers, all the cages, all the instrumentation that are installed in those vehicles.
Correct, Commissioner. We have to remove the lights, the cage, the seats, the decals, the bumper, you name it. One thing I want to point out, the backup document says it's, we're transferring them with radios, and that is incorrect. All the radios were pulled and handed over to the Sheriff's Communication Department about a month and a half ago. So we are retaining the radios because we could continue to use those.
You make the motion. I move, so you can talk.
It's great to see so many of our municipalities utilizing this collaboration. So, yeah, thank you.
I do believe that some of them are watching when we dispose of items, and then they're going straight to Hopden.
Well, this is great. Thank you.
We have a motion to approve as amended. Do we have a second, please?
I second that.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Perez?
Aye.
Commissioner Leon?
Aye.
Commissioner Stout?
Aye.
Commissioner Hagerty?
Aye.
Judge vote?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Item 14, under Budget and Finance, approve amendment number 27 to the County of El Paso's 2017-2018 operating budget. This budgetary amendment will increase grants by $8,773,000, excuse me, $8,773, thus increasing the overall budget of $485,239,204.87 to $485,247,977.87.
Good morning, Judge Commissioners, Francisco Rios from the Office of Budget and Fiscal Policy. Any questions regarding VA 27?
No questions, I would move to approve.
Second.
Commissioner Perez?
Aye.
Commissioner Leon?
Aye.
Commissioner Stout?
Aye.
Commissioner Hagerty?
Aye.
Judge vote?
Aye.
Motion carries. Commissioners' Court will now recess into executive session to discuss items 15A through 15F pursuant to Texas Government Code Section 551.087, 551.074, and 551.071. The Court will reconvene to take official action.
The county of El Paso has contracted with Next Level IT to create a technology master plan. This plan will help lay out the technology priorities over the next two to five years. A vital part of this initiative has Next Level seeking your feedback on the effectiveness of services ITD currently delivers. Your input is important, appreciated, and anonymous. We encourage you to participate in our efforts to become a better resource for you. You can access this survey by visiting the ITD Intranet homepage and clicking on the link provided. Commissioner Andrew Hagerty would like to invite you to his weekly breakfast meeting that takes place every Wednesday at 7:30 a.m. at Danny's Diner located at 4690 Trans Mountain Road. Every week he has a different speaker who will be discussing topics of interest for the community. So if you live in the northeast, west side, or anywhere else in the county, come and join us for the breakfast meeting.
Don't wait in line, pay online. Visit the Financial Recovery Division website at http://www.epcounty.com/budget/financialrecovery.html to make your payments online or find out more about our kiosk locations. We now accept payments on misdemeanor felony and justice of the peace cases.
You can now watch Commissioners Court meetings on YouTube. Go to youtube.com and search for "El Paso County Commissioners" or "El Paso County, Texas." Subscribe to our channels to see our latest videos.
Did you know that you can save money on the cost of your medications? And doing so is easy. In 2015, the county of El Paso launched a prescription discount card program from coast to coast. The cards are available to all El Paso County residents free of charge and everyone qualifies. You can pick up a card at any county office location, Walgreens, Walmart, CVS, or Target pharmacies, or simply print the card at www.coastthe number two coastrx.com. Happy savings!
Did you know the county of El Paso's purchasing department is responsible for ensuring that all items and services needed by various county departments are purchased in the manner required by the state of Texas? Whether through formal sealed bids or smaller dollar quotations, the county purchasing team is dedicated to finding the best contracting return on your taxpayer dollars. Additionally, the purchasing department is responsible for the tracking of inventory within the county and properly disposing surplus to public auctions. For questions about how to become a vendor and compete for county contracts, or to learn more about public auctions, please contact us at telephone number 915-546-2048.
The 346 District Court Judge Angie Juarez Barred started the El Paso Veterans Treatment Court Program in 2012 for veterans and active service members that have been arrested and charged with a felony or misdemeanor criminal offense. To be considered for the specialty court, the statutory criteria includes: Be a veteran or current member of the United States Armed Forces, including a member of the Reserves, National Guard, or State Guard; and suffer from a brain injury, mental illness, or mental disorder, including PTSD, or be a victim of military sexual trauma, all occurring or resulting from military service. Call Sylvia Serna, Veterans Program Director at 915-546-2119, or email her at scerna@epcounty.com for any information. Did you know that the county of El Paso's fixed asset control and inventory disposal is handled through the purchasing department? Throughout the course of each business year, the county holds live public auctions to dispose of aged equipment, vehicles, furniture, and other items that are no longer needed. To find out about upcoming auctions or to learn more about the county's inventory disposal process, contact the purchasing department at telephone number 915-546-2048.
Throughout the course of each business year, the county holds live public auctions to dispose of aged equipment, vehicles, furniture, and other items that are no longer needed. To find out about upcoming auctions or to learn more about the county's inventory disposal process, contact the purchasing department at telephone number (915) 546-2048.
The 346 District Court Judge Angie Juarez Barred started the El Paso Veterans Treatment Court program in 2012 for veterans and active service members that have been arrested and charged with a felony or misdemeanor criminal offense. To be considered for the specialty court, the statutory criteria includes be a veteran or current member of the United States Armed Forces, including a member of the Reserves, National Guard, or State Guard, and suffer from a brain injury, mental illness, or mental disorder, including PTSD, or be a victim of military sexual trauma, all occurring or resulting from military service. Call Sylvia Serna, Veterans Program Director, at (915) 546-2119, or email her at scerna@epcounty.com for any information.
Did you know that the county of El Paso's fixed asset control and inventory disposal is handled through the purchasing department? Throughout the course of each business year, the county holds live public auctions to dispose of aged equipment, vehicles, furniture, and other items that are no longer needed. To find out about upcoming auctions or to learn more about the county's inventory disposal process, contact the purchasing department at telephone number (915) 546-2048.
The 346 District Court Judge Angie Juarez Barred started the El Paso Veterans Treatment Court program in 2012 for veterans and active service members that have been arrested and charged with a felony or misdemeanor criminal offense. To be considered for the specialty court, the statutory criteria includes be a veteran or current member of the United States Armed Forces, including a member of the Reserves, National Guard, or State Guard, and suffer from a brain injury, mental illness, or mental disorder, including PTSD, or be a victim of military sexual trauma, all occurring or resulting from military service. Call Sylvia Serna, Veterans Program Director, at (915) 546-2119, or email her at scerna@epcounty.com for any information.
Did you know that the county of El Paso's fixed asset control and inventory disposal is handled through the purchasing department? Throughout the course of each business year, the county holds live public auctions to dispose of aged equipment, vehicles, furniture, and other items that are no longer needed. To find out about upcoming auctions or to learn more about the county's inventory disposal process, contact the purchasing department at telephone number (915) 546-2048.
The 346 District Court Judge Angie Juarez Barred started the El Paso Veterans Treatment Court program in 2012 for veterans and active service members that have been arrested and charged with a felony or misdemeanor criminal offense. To be considered for the specialty court, the statutory criteria includes be a veteran or current member of the United States Armed Forces, including a member of the Reserves, National Guard, or State Guard, and suffer from a brain injury, mental illness, or mental disorder, including PTSD, or be a victim of military sexual trauma, all occurring or resulting from military service. Call Sylvia Serna, Veterans Program Director, at (915) 546-2119, or email her at scerna@epcounty.com for any information.
Did you know that the county of El Paso's fixed asset control and inventory disposal is handled through the purchasing department? Throughout the course of each business year, the county holds live public auctions to dispose of aged equipment, vehicles, furniture, and other items that are no longer needed. To find out about upcoming auctions or to learn more about the county's inventory disposal process, contact the purchasing department at telephone number (915) 546-2048.
The 346 District Court Judge Angie Juarez Barred started the El Paso Veterans Treatment Court program in 2012 for veterans and active service members that have been arrested and charged with a felony or misdemeanor criminal offense. To be considered for the specialty court, the statutory criteria includes be a veteran or current member of the United States Armed Forces, including a member of the Reserves, National Guard, or State Guard, and suffer from a brain injury, mental illness, or mental disorder, including PTSD, or be a victim of military sexual trauma, all occurring or resulting from military service. Call Sylvia Serna, Veterans Program Director, at (915) 546-2119, or email her at scerna@epcounty.com for any information.
Did you know that the county of El Paso's fixed asset control and inventory disposal is handled through the purchasing department? Throughout the course of each business year, the county holds live public auctions to dispose of aged equipment, vehicles, furniture, and other items that are no longer needed. To find out about upcoming auctions or to learn more about the county's inventory disposal process, contact the purchasing department at telephone number (915) 546-2048.
The 346 District Court Judge Angie Juarez Barred started the El Paso Veterans Treatment Court program in 2012 for veterans and active service members that have been arrested and charged with a felony or misdemeanor criminal offense. To be considered for the specialty court, the statutory criteria includes be a veteran or current member of the United States Armed Forces, including a member of the Reserves, National Guard, or State Guard, and suffer from a brain injury, mental illness, or mental disorder, including PTSD, or be a victim of military sexual trauma, all occurring or resulting from military service. Call Sylvia Serna, Veterans Program Director, at (915) 546-2119, or email her at scerna@epcounty.com for any information.
Did you know that the county of El Paso's fixed asset control and inventory disposal is handled through the purchasing department? Throughout the course of each business year, the county holds live public auctions to dispose of aged equipment, vehicles, furniture, and other items that are no longer needed. To find out about upcoming auctions or to learn more about the county's inventory disposal process, contact the purchasing department at telephone number (915) 546-2048.
The 346 District Court Judge Angie Juarez Barred started the El Paso Veterans Treatment Court program in 2012 for veterans and active service members that have been arrested and charged with a felony or misdemeanor criminal offense. To be considered for the specialty court, the statutory criteria includes be a veteran or current member of the United States Armed Forces, including a member of the Reserves, National Guard, or State Guard, and suffer from a brain injury, mental illness, or mental disorder, including PTSD, or be a victim of military sexual trauma, all occurring or resulting from military service. Call Sylvia Serna, Veterans Program Director, at (915) 546-2119, or email her at scerna@epcounty.com for any information.
Did you know that the county of El Paso's fixed asset control and inventory disposal is handled through the purchasing department? Throughout the course of each business year, the county holds live public auctions to dispose of aged equipment, vehicles, furniture, and other items that are no longer needed. To find out about upcoming auctions or to learn more about the county's inventory disposal process, contact the purchasing department at telephone number (915) 546-2048.
The 346 District Court Judge Angie Juarez Barred started the El Paso Veterans Treatment Court program in 2012 for veterans and active service members that have been arrested and charged with a felony or misdemeanor criminal offense. To be considered for the specialty court, the statutory criteria includes be a veteran or current member of the United States Armed Forces, including a member of the Reserves, National Guard, or State Guard, and suffer from a brain injury, mental illness, or mental disorder, including PTSD, or be a victim of military sexual trauma, all occurring or resulting from military service. Call Sylvia Serna, Veterans Program Director, at (915) 546-2119, or email her at scerna@epcounty.com for any information.
Did you know that the county of El Paso's fixed asset control and inventory disposal is handled through the purchasing department? Throughout the course of each business year, the county holds live public auctions to dispose of aged equipment, vehicles, furniture, and other items that are no longer needed. To find out about upcoming auctions or to learn more about the county's inventory disposal process, contact the purchasing department at telephone number (915) 546-2048.
The 346 District Court Judge Angie Juarez Barred started the El Paso Veterans Treatment Court program in 2012 for veterans and active service members that have been arrested and charged with a felony or misdemeanor criminal offense. To be considered for the specialty court, the statutory criteria includes be a veteran or current member of the United States Armed Forces, including a member of the Reserves, National Guard, or State Guard, and suffer from a brain injury, mental illness, or mental disorder, including PTSD, or be a victim of military sexual trauma, all occurring or resulting from military service. Call Sylvia Serna, Veterans Program Director, at (915) 546-2119, or email her at scerna@epcounty.com for any information.
Did you know that the county of El Paso's fixed asset control and inventory disposal is handled through the purchasing department? Throughout the course of each business year, the county holds live public auctions to dispose of aged equipment, vehicles, furniture, and other items that are no longer needed. To find out about upcoming auctions or to learn more about the county's inventory disposal process, contact the purchasing department at telephone number (915) 546-2048.
The 346 District Court Judge Angie Juarez Barred started the El Paso Veterans Treatment Court program in 2012 for veterans and active service members that have been arrested and charged with a felony or misdemeanor criminal offense. To be considered for the specialty court, the statutory criteria includes be a veteran or current member of the United States Armed Forces, including a member of the Reserves, National Guard, or State Guard, and suffer from a brain injury, mental illness, or mental disorder, including PTSD, or be a victim of military sexual trauma, all occurring or resulting from military service. Call Sylvia Serna, Veterans Program Director, at (915) 546-2119, or email her at scerna@epcounty.com for any information.
Did you know that the county of El Paso's fixed asset control and inventory disposal is handled through the purchasing department? Throughout the course of each business year, the county holds live public auctions to dispose of aged equipment, vehicles, furniture, and other items that are no longer needed. To find out about upcoming auctions or to learn more about the county's inventory disposal process, contact the purchasing department at telephone number (915) 546-2048.
The 346 District Court Judge Angie Juarez Barred started the El Paso Veterans Treatment Court program in 2012 for veterans and active service members that have been arrested and charged with a felony or misdemeanor criminal offense. To be considered for the specialty court, the statutory criteria includes be a veteran or current member of the United States Armed Forces, including a member of the Reserves, National Guard, or State Guard, and suffer from a brain injury, mental illness, or mental disorder, including PTSD, or be a victim of military sexual trauma, all occurring or resulting from military service. Call Sylvia Serna, Veterans Program Director, at (915) 546-2119, or email her at scerna@epcounty.com for any information.
Did you know that the county of El Paso's fixed asset control and inventory disposal is handled through the purchasing department? Throughout the course of each business year, the county holds live public auctions to dispose of aged equipment, vehicles, furniture, and other items that are no longer needed. To find out about upcoming auctions or to learn more about the county's inventory disposal process, contact the purchasing department at telephone number (915) 546-2048.
The 346 District Court Judge Angie Juarez Barred started the El Paso Veterans Treatment Court program in 2012 for veterans and active service members that have been arrested and charged with a felony or misdemeanor criminal offense. To be considered for the specialty court, the statutory criteria includes be a veteran or current member of the United States Armed Forces, including a member of the Reserves, National Guard, or State Guard, and suffer from a brain injury, mental illness, or mental disorder, including PTSD, or be a victim of military sexual trauma, all occurring or resulting from military service. Call Sylvia Serna, Veterans Program Director, at (915) 546-2119, or email her at scerna@epcounty.com for any information.
Did you know that the county of El Paso's fixed asset control and inventory disposal is handled through the purchasing department? Throughout the course of each business year, the county holds live public auctions to dispose of aged equipment, vehicles, furniture, and other items that are no longer needed. To find out about upcoming auctions or to learn more about the county's inventory disposal process, contact the purchasing department at telephone number (915) 546-2048.
The 346 District Court Judge Angie Juarez Barred started the El Paso Veterans Treatment Court program in 2012 for veterans and active service members that have been arrested and charged with a felony or misdemeanor criminal offense. To be considered for the specialty court, the statutory criteria includes be a veteran or current member of the United States Armed Forces, including a member of the Reserves, National Guard, or State Guard, and suffer from a brain injury, mental illness, or mental disorder, including PTSD, or be a victim of military sexual trauma, all occurring or resulting from military service. Call Sylvia Serna, Veterans Program Director, at (915) 546-2119, or email her at scerna@epcounty.com for any information.
Did you know that the county of El Paso's fixed asset control and inventory disposal is handled through the purchasing department? Throughout the course of each business year, the county holds live public auctions to dispose of aged equipment, vehicles, furniture, and other items that are no longer needed. To find out about upcoming auctions or to learn more about the county's inventory disposal process, contact the purchasing department at telephone number (915) 546-2048.
The 346 District Court Judge Angie Juarez Barred started the El Paso Veterans Treatment Court program in 2012 for veterans and active service members that have been arrested and charged with a felony or misdemeanor criminal offense. To be considered for the specialty court, the statutory criteria includes be a veteran or current member of the United States Armed Forces, including a member of the Reserves, National Guard, or State Guard, and suffer from a brain injury, mental illness, or mental disorder, including PTSD, or be a victim of military sexual trauma, all occurring or resulting from military service. Call Sylvia Serna, Veterans Program Director, at (915) 546-2119, or email her at scerna@epcounty.com for any information.
Did you know that the county of El Paso's fixed asset control and inventory disposal is handled through the purchasing department? Throughout the course of each business year, the county holds live public auctions to dispose of aged equipment, vehicles, furniture, and other items that are no longer needed. To find out about upcoming auctions or to learn more about the county's inventory disposal process, contact the purchasing department at telephone number (915) 546-2048.
The 346 District Court Judge Angie Juarez Barred started the El Paso Veterans Treatment Court program in 2012 for veterans and active service members that have been arrested and charged with a felony or misdemeanor criminal offense. To be considered for the specialty court, the statutory criteria includes be a veteran or current member of the United States Armed Forces, including a member of the Reserves, National Guard, or State Guard, and suffer from a brain injury, mental illness, or mental disorder, including PTSD, or be a victim of military sexual trauma, all occurring or resulting from military service. Call Sylvia Serna, Veterans Program Director, at (915) 546-2119, or email her at scerna@epcounty.com for any information.
Did you know that the county of El Paso's fixed asset control and inventory disposal is handled through the purchasing department? Throughout the course of each business year, the county holds live public auctions to dispose of aged equipment, vehicles, furniture, and other items that are no longer needed. To find out about upcoming auctions or to learn more about the county's inventory disposal process, contact the purchasing department at telephone number (915) 546-2048.
The 346 District Court Judge Angie Juarez Barred started the El Paso Veterans Treatment Court program in 2012 for veterans and active service members that have been arrested and charged with a felony or misdemeanor criminal offense. To be considered for the specialty court, the statutory criteria includes be a veteran or current member of the United States Armed Forces, including a member of the Reserves, National Guard, or State Guard, and suffer from a brain injury, mental illness, or mental disorder, including PTSD, or be a victim of military sexual trauma, all occurring or resulting from military service. Call Sylvia Serna, Veterans Program Director, at (915) 546-2119, or email her at scerna@epcounty.com for any information.
Did you know that the county of El Paso's fixed asset control and inventory disposal is handled through the purchasing department? Throughout the course of each business year, the county holds live public auctions to dispose of aged equipment, vehicles, furniture, and other items that are no longer needed. To find out about upcoming auctions or to learn more about the county's inventory disposal process, contact the purchasing department at telephone number (915) 546-2048.
The 346 District Court Judge Angie Juarez Barred started the El Paso Veterans Treatment
The County of El Paso has contracted with Next Level IT to create a technology master
Commissioner Andrew Hagerty would like to invite you to his weekly breakfast meeting that takes place every Wednesday at 7:30 a.m. at Danny's Diner located at 4690 Trans Mountain Road. Every week he has a different speaker who will be discussing topics of interest for the community. So if you live in the northeast, west side, or anywhere else in the county, come and join us for the breakfast meeting.
Don't wait in line, pay online. Visit the Financial Recovery Division website at http://www.epcounty.com/budget/financialrecovery.html to make your payments online or find out more about our kiosk locations. We now accept payments on misdemeanor felony and justice of the peace cases.
You can now watch Commissioners Court meetings on YouTube. Go to youtube.com and search for El Paso County Commissioners or El Paso County, Texas. Subscribe to our channels to see our latest videos.
Did you know that you can save money on the cost of your medications? And doing so is easy. In 2015, the County of El Paso launched a prescription discount card program from coast to coast. The cards are available to all El Paso County residents free of charge and everyone qualifies. You can pick up a card at any county office location, Walgreens, Walmart, CVS, or Target pharmacies, or simply print the card at www.coast, the number two, coast, r x dot com. Happy savings.
Did you know the County of El Paso's purchasing department is responsible for ensuring that all items and services needed by various county departments are purchased in the matter required by the state of Texas? Whether through formal sealed bids or smaller dollar quotations, the county purchasing team is dedicated to finding the best contracting return on your taxpayer dollars. Additionally, the purchasing department is responsible for the tracking of inventory within the county and properly disposing surplus to public auctions. For questions about how to become a vendor and compete for county contracts, or to learn more about public auctions, please contact us at telephone number 915-546-2048.
The 346th District Court Judge Angie Juarez Barred started the El Paso Veterans Treatment Court Program in 2012 for veterans and active service members that have been arrested and charged with a felony or misdemeanor criminal offense. To be considered for this specialty court, the statutory criteria includes be a veteran or current member of the United States Armed Forces, including a member of the Reserves, National Guard, or State Guard, and suffer from a brain injury, mental illness, or mental disorder, including PTSD, or be a victim of military sexual trauma, all occurring or resulting from military service. Call Sylvia Serna, Veterans Program Director at 915-546-2119, or email her at scerna@epcounty.com for any information.
Did you know that the County of El Paso's fixed asset control and inventory disposal is handled through the purchasing department? Throughout the course of each business year, the county holds live public auctions to dispose of aged equipment, vehicles, furniture, and other items that are no longer needed. To find out about upcoming auctions or to learn more about the county's inventory disposal process, contact the purchasing department at telephone number 915-546-2048.
Thank you. Commissioners' Court has reconvened into regular open session at 12:35 p.m. Item 16 postponed from April 9, 2018. Discuss and take appropriate action to approve the amendment of the settlement agreement with Mesquite Properties LP. Cause Number 2014 DCB 3734 and County Attorney Case Number O28514 LD. Could we please have a motion to authorize the county judge to sign the amendment to the agreement?
No move.
Second.
Thank you. Commissioner Perez?
Aye.
Commissioner Leon?
Aye.
Commissioner Stout?
Aye.
Commissioner Hagerty?
Aye.
Judge vote?
Aye.
Motion carries. Item 17, discuss and take appropriate action to appoint candidates to the emergency services Districts Number One and Number Two Board of Commissioners. No action on this item. That completes today's agenda.
Everything for today, we're adjourned. Thanks so much.
Thank you. So the meeting is adjourned at 12:36 p.m.